Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 5th, 2020 special meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. I would ask that this time that Ms. La Magna give us a roll call.
Commissioner Traeger.
Here.
Commissioner Delgado.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Gilliland.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here. I would just ask that if you're on the dais, make sure that you speak into the microphone. That is our way of being able to hear. Okay. Madam Clerk, if you would, at this time commence with the announcement of the first item.
Item number two on tonight's meeting, and we're at the May 5th, 2020 special meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. Item number two is the public comment, and this is when I would announce any written comments that were received. I had emailed and placed on the dais for you the one public comment that we received. And it was related to procedures of...
Okay. I know it has not been procedural for us thus far to read their comment into the record. Is there an objection to reading that comment into the record?
No.
No.
No objection? Okay, then I would ask the clerk if you feel prepared to do so.
Okay. The commenter's name is Ann Ruby at 137 Park Avenue, and she said, "Good evening. I have a few thoughts on public comment methods. I'm hoping the agenda will be sent out electronically with much more advanced notice than it was today. I suspect it is a kink and will get ironed out, but it would be nice to receive the agenda on Friday prior to the meeting, as was done previously. The city clerk's office does an amazing job, and I know that this will get resolved. Public comments should be read aloud, perhaps by the clerk during the meeting. A word count of 500 takes about two and a half minutes if typed. Any review or editing of comments should be gavel standards. Would the mayor gavel down the speaker for a comment? Comments should not be reviewed or edited simply for the comfort of the commission. Transparency is an ongoing issue; no need to muddy the waters by a petty wielding of the editor's pen. Please do not laugh or chuckle when reading comments unless you plan on sharing the source of your amusement with all. Even then, it is rude and belies the mayor ever-present comments. We are delighted to have each of you with us here tonight. Thank you, stay safe, and be well." And that was the end of her comments.
Okay, farewell.
Okay.
Comment is received. Okay, Madam Clerk, moving on.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number three, which is the resolution extending the local state of emergency. This is a resolution extending the local state of emergency due to COVID-19 for an additional seven-day period ending May 12th, 2020, temporarily authorizing the operation of outdoor seating areas by eating and drinking establishment, consistent with Governor DeSantis' Executive Order 20-112, subject to conditions, temporarily delegating to the city manager authority to grant licenses for encroachment of restaurant-related outdoor seating areas onto public sidewalks under Section 5.3.17 of the Land Development Code, suspending certain requirements set forth in Subpart, excuse me, in Subpart A, Article 5, Section 20 of the city charter, with respect to the verification of signatures required for nominating petitions filed for the 2020 city municipal election, subject to conditions, authorizing the planning board and redevelopment boards to have public meetings subject to conditions, waiving late payment fees for city utility customers during the local state of emergency, and providing an effective date.
Second.
Who was the initial, who was the motion from?
Commissioner Gilliland. And the second was from Commissioner Reed.
Farewell, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission?
I have a few, please, sir. With, I just want to be sure everybody at home understands it, since they don't have this in front of them right now. It says that licenses will be issued at no charge to the applicant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That would be for the sidewalk license. It may be prudent for the benefit of the public and for those, you know, not here in the commission chambers, if I walk through the entire organs.
I would absolutely enjoy that.
Would you please?
Please, thank you.
Let me walk through the whole thing and just...
And bring your mic a little closer.
Explain what we're doing.
Thank you.
So, and first, I should apologize for the late distribution of this resolution. It is largely in response to the governor's most recent executive order, 112, wherein the governor has authorized restaurants to open up at 25% of their occupancy. So, one of the things where the city would accomplish by adopting this resolution would be to allow restaurants to compensate for that loss of indoor seating by providing for outdoor seating. So with that in mind, let me just kind of walk through this and answer any questions as we go. So the first section of the resolution is simply extending the state of emergency for another seven days. As you know, pursuant to state law, we've got authority to extend for seven-day periods, and that's why it's extending until May 12th at midnight. The next section is entitled Restaurant Outdoor Seating on Private Property. So this allows for outdoor seating, which would not otherwise be allowed under our Land Development Code. So this would allow people, or people, restaurants to convert parking areas into outdoor seating areas, subject to the conditions stated in this resolution.
So I'm sorry, right there, a question already. So if I'm a restaurant and I have, let's take something hypothetical, on Beach Street. I've got a restaurant on Beach Street. I've got it right in front. I have very little, as of, in the future, we'll have more sidewalk seating thanks to the expansion project, but, so I've got some space in front of my building that belongs to the city, and then I've got two or three parking lots. What can I do with that? Or parking stalls?
Let's hold the first thought with regard to the sidewalk café seating. So that would be something that is addressed in here in the next section. So let me get to that section, and we'll talk about that.
But this is relating to parking spots?
This, this section four relates to outdoor seating on private property.
Okay, alrighty.
So there's two sections, one for a private property, one for sidewalks.
Got it.
So with regard to the private property, there's no license requirement. You can operate outside, subject to the conditions stated herein.
All right.
And if I could just briefly refer to those. Obviously, you've got to comply with the governor's executive orders and all the social distancing required, social distancing requirements of the CDC. So the tables would have to be six feet apart and no more than 10 at a particular seating.
No more than 10 individuals.
At a particular seating.
Yes.
Okay.
They, the establishment must comply, of course, with applicable state laws with regard to health, health department and building code, et cetera. No change there. With regard to the state liquor license law, this does not impact or modify the requirement for establishments to comply with their liquor licenses. So in other words, that is a subject of state regulation, and they would have to amend their licenses in order to have outdoor liquor service, not something the city is directly involved in.
So just so for my own clarification, then, so I can serve food outside, but I cannot serve alcohol outside?
Subject to state regulations.
Okay.
Right. With regard to the parking areas, which would be converted to seating, that has to be screened off from the parking areas themselves, so that there's not a mixture of vehicles and seating, for safety reasons, obviously. The outdoor seating cannot negatively impact ingress or egress to the building. You can't use off-site parking or seating. It all has to be within the site of the restaurant. You do need the owner's authorization to have this sort of outdoor seating. And of course, the area must be maintained in a clean and sanitary condition. In addition, there's a restriction drafted into here that there shall be no entertainment allowed in the outside, outdoor seating area. I would add, as I reviewed this, or sound production, just to be clear.
Or sound production.
So with your approval, I'll make that change. And then finally, if the establishment were to put up any tents or canopies, they would have to be under 100 square feet, or if larger, they would need a building permit.
Is everyone hearing Bob okay?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so that, that's a wrap for Section 4 on the outdoor seating. Are there any questions so far? All right, the next section has to do with restaurant outdoor seating on public sidewalks. So this essentially streamlines our existing requirements for issuing licenses for creating what we sometimes call a sidewalk café. So with your Beach Street example, obviously, we have certain restaurants out there that have sidewalk licenses currently. This would allow other restaurants, which abut sidewalks, to have outdoor seating and avoid the requirement that it come back to the city commission. Instead, they'll go straight to the city manager for approval, so hopefully to allow that outdoor seating on the sidewalks to occur more expeditiously.
So while we're on this, regarding, regarding Beach Street, let me start there first. So we have a couple of areas which the city manager and I discussed. What are the odds of the space by Ichinisan, the Thai restaurant? There's like a red alleyway. Are they allowed to put sidewalks, tables, chairs in that alleyway?
That would not be covered in this. This simply applies to sidewalk areas, and that is an actual thoroughfare.
I'm not sure it is. I don't think that is.
It's actually, it's both.
It's both.
You do have...
It's a walkway.
Walkway, too.
So a separate license could be granted for that area, but it would have to come back through the commission unless I were to revise this in some way.
Well, if it's a public sidewalk, it doesn't.
It, I don't know what it is, to be honest. Yeah, I don't know. I thought it was a thoroughfare. If it's a sidewalk, you know, we could treat it as a sidewalk, you know, if we want to interpret it in that way, and issue the license through the manager.
Okay, and then one more question. So let's say I'm a restaurant, whether I'm on Beach Street or not, I'm a restaurant, and same situation, I don't actually have a parking lot in front of my building or extra spots. I'm in the middle of two other spaces. Can I approach my neighbors, if they have some extra space, and ask my neighbors, with permission, whether or not I can use their sidewalk space?
So we were careful in drafting this so as not to encroach upon neighbors.
I saw that.
For obvious reasons, not knowing what the neighbor's use would be of their own spaces. So this would not allow that sort of encroachment to neighboring sites.
Okay.
All right, then, moving forward, the next section is called Candidate Nominating Petitions, and this addresses a completely separate issue, but we do have a requirement in our charter that there be petitions obtained in each of the districts for all candidates in order to qualify for election. As part of those requirements, the petitions have to be signed in the presence of the candidate, and the candidate has to sign an affidavit indicating that they were assigned in the candidate's presence and that they're authentic. Because of the COVID-19 distancing restrictions, we have modified that requirement so that we will waive the in-the-presence of requirement of the charter, and in lieu thereof, allow for photocopied executions of the petition, along with an affidavit from the candidate indicating, to the best of their knowledge, that the signatures are authentic. Any questions on that? All right. The next section, Section 7, is virtual public meetings for planning board and redevelopment boards. This allows those boards to meet, subject to your adopted procedures for public meetings under the local state of emergency, so much like we're having today. The planning board and the redevelopment boards could meet so that we could move forward with land development issues. And then finally, any questions on that before I move forward? Okay. Finally, on Section 8, the city would waive all late payment fees, which might be due on utility charges. And that concludes the proposed resolution.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any comments on the proposed resolution? All right, farewell. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same side. All right, this motion carried 7-0.
And to be clear, Mayor, I will include the change which I recommended that will exclude or not allow sound production, in addition to outdoor entertainment in section.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Just want to be clear on something, just for my own edification. So we have a couple of restaurants. We have a couple of facilities on Main Street that I'm not sure if they're restaurants or bars at this point. And let's say that particular whichever establishment, because this has come up numerous times here, that particular establishment, let's say, if their premise says they can serve alcohol, they also have to have food, correct, if it's outside?
These...
Some of these are private properties where they, but they just haven't served food.
So we track the language of the governor's executive order. So these restrictions or allowances apply to restaurants that are licensed under Chapter 500 or 509 of the Florida statutes, and that's further defined to be more than 50% of their gross sales from food, as opposed to alcohol.
Okay.
Good, that's it?
That was the final item on the agenda.
Is that the final comment? Okay, we'll proceed to commission comment. We'll start with Commissioner Traeger.
I understand it's your birthday. Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you very kindly. It's been a fabulous day.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, I think we need to continue to be very vigilant in social distancing and everything else. Let's get rid of this darn thing. I hear that they're expecting way more deaths, and I don't want to see that.
Yeah, concurred. Thank you. Commissioner Delgado.
Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I respect your Commissioner Traeger's thoughts and sentiments. As I said before, I think things did not get as dire and dark for us here in Daytona Beach as it could have been. I think that's partly due to, you know, good planning on everyone's part, and people taking it seriously and staying at home and doing all of that. So there are parts of the country that got hit a lot harder than we did, and I'm very thankful that we avoided the tremendous toll this took on other parts of the country. But I agree that we're not out of the woods yet, and I do worry that there might be a second wave of things. So I do encourage everyone, like Commissioner Traeger said, to stay vigilant and to continue to practice the social distancing and the good hygiene and the frequent hand washing and all that that's necessary so that, you know, we can, we can combat this, as well as other diseases. I think I attended a county meeting press release last week, and they were talking about all kinds of infectious diseases are down as well. So overall, I think this has been, you know, a good reminder of the importance of things like hand washing. But back to the point, I think we just need to continue to stay the course and not, not celebrate our victory just yet. I know everyone's eager for some good news and eager to kind of put this behind us. And as we see the restaurants and things fully reopening, I think the tendency is to say this is all over and done. But unfortunately, I don't think that's entirely the case yet. So I was, I went into the Oyster Pub today, and I was glad to see that people were out and about. You know, I saw the beaches were open this weekend, and there were a lot of people there. So I know there's a lot of pent-up desire for people to go out and, you know, resume life as we knew it before the COVID-19 epidemic, pandemic. But I think, again, we, we can't, we can't let our guard down too soon, or we'll find ourselves right back here. And then also, I do want to remind everybody that receive their, you know, their government loans and things like that, that, you know, businesses are back open now. People are trying to keep their employees busy. People are trying to go back to running businesses as usual. So let's continue to shop and patronize our local businesses. Many of our small businesses have been hurt very badly. Our small restaurants, our mom-and-pop stores throughout Daytona Beach really need our support. They really need our patronage. So I, you know, encourage everyone to shop local, to shop with our mom-and-pop stores, and help bring some of that stimulus money back into our area and help the businesses that have been hurt by all of this epidemic. I don't know if there's any, you know, when we reopen fully, hopefully we can do, we'll check in with our small businesses and get the official kind of pulse. But hopefully, we can do some small business celebrations, or small business Sundays, or small business Saturdays, or do some kind of events or anything like that to promote and encourage our small businesses as we come out of this pandemic. Thank you all, have a great night.
I'll just piggyback before Commissioner May goes. He's talking about small business. I would like to see us come away with some sort of plan where we partner with the business community, as, you know, especially our larger, more successful businesses, to figure out a way to offer some sort of support, be it even financial, small amounts, of course, some sort of grant, or, and if it's not in that way, just extend ways of communicating and advertising on behalf of our small businesses as a way to show that we, as the community, support our local businesses. But let's, let's charge the manager and staff with some ways of figuring ways that we can do that. I'm very happy tonight to hear about the, and very supportive of turning the water bill. I think that's a very important step for us to continue for residents. We're not trying to stick it to anybody at this time. And that's certainly what I think that sends the message, to say that we're all in this together. Commissioner May?
So I too, if there was any kind of initiative for small business people, I would be very much in support of that. I met this week, actually, with a group of merchants from Beach Street. They have a small merchant group. They're meeting privately. We did it online via Zoom, and I got some good insight from them. They're very concerned for themselves right now, because they love that Beach Street is moving forward and being developed, and the street looks great. They're looking forward to the reopening, but for some of them, they are single proprietors, maybe one or two people, and it's not doing them well. And so we're, they have a meeting once a month, maybe a couple of times a month now they're going to meet. And so what I'm doing, my personal effort, nothing to do with the city, is I started a radio show that airs tomorrow, and I'm actually going to highlight different businesses in Zone 3, and talk about what they do, the fact that they're open, any specials they're having, and encourage people to go. But I will say this, that's for the businesses that are open. My, my personal position is that I'm not going to open, so I have a, I'm in my own little space of, you know, advocating people to go and go to a business when I myself am not going to open. Even when they tell me to open, I'm not going to open for a while, because I service a vulnerable population, you know, people who, who have health needs and are improving their health, and I don't want to put them at risk. So I'm kind of torn between saying, go out and do A, B, C, D, whereas I myself know that I'm not doing any of that, and I'm being honest about that. So that's my, my little political statement about that. So that starts tomorrow, and any business that wants to contact me, they can, but I know who you are, and I already have a list of who I'm going to talk about, so you're going to get some free marketing and advertising out of me. As it relates to the city also, and again, this is all COVID-based, the city started their own radio show on W E L E, The Cat. I'm on that one, too. And it was fantastic. That health update, Reverend Durham was on it. They had Housing Authority update, which I thought was extremely informative, and I think it's very good. It was very well done, so I was pleased to hear all that. I have been, my big concern last week was, or when we met last, was food distribution. And so I will say that I have been, every two or three days, contacting the city manager with my concerns. And so now, based on my research, Mr. Chisholm, I have found out that there is a need, but not quite yet, interestingly. The need is more for gloves and masks. And I say that based on the fact that Housing Authority ran, they sent out a survey, and they had gloves, there are different things people might need, and the two things that came out were gloves and masks. Those are very important. People either couldn't access them or didn't know how to get them, something along those lines, cloth coverings, didn't really understand that, and also sanitizer, like buckets or jars of just, you know, household sanitizer. But food was not high on the list. So that's one aspect. Then I called the county to find out what they were doing with regard to food, because I was listening to Commissioner Traeger discuss, you know, the concept of we don't want to spend money necessarily. Food is something that I feel we should spend money on, but if we don't have to do it yet, I don't want to spend the money quite yet. It might be a need that's later on down the road. And so I called the county. They have resources, and so our participation might be not necessarily dollars for food. Might be distribution sites. It might be helping to organize some sort of community effort, fraternities or sororities to help out. Might be something along those lines. With regard to, to what my, what the month of May represents to me personally, the month of May is a mental health month. So on the radio show, we're speaking about mental health, but I think that as a rule, keeping an eye on people right now is important, friends and family members, in your circle via phone, phone, Zoom, do whatever. And I want to say that that is going to be about it. The main thing for me was definitely what people need right now in Zone 3. And yes, they need food, but I want to get more information back from Housing Authority before I say, and this is the avenue, and if I can save the city money by us using different resources, then I will try to do that. But it'll be based on research. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilliland.
Yes, so I was actually very pleased with the governor's restrictions that he put into place. You know, I think that what happened in Georgia was a little too loose, and think that this is actually a very good reasoned reopening strategy for Phase 1. I believe that at 25%, you know, capacity in restaurants, you know, it's going to, it's going to help. I'm hopeful that Phase 2 will come quickly, and we can get that at least up to 50%. We're going to find a lot of places that, that are small, that either logistically can't do it, I was thinking Brickyard, for example. You know, you can't sit at the bar. That's in the executive order. So, you know, and, and he really wouldn't be able to, to get people into tables there because of the way it's configured. You know, also, if you've got a small capacity, you know, 40 people, you know, you know, capacity, then, you know, you can only have 10, you know. So, you know, this is a, this is a very conservative Phase 1 strategy that the governor's put together, and I think that it will do a lot for making sure that we don't see a resurgence of cases. We are going to see the, the numbers of positives going up, because we're doing more testing now. But, you know, when we, when you look at, one of the things the governor is kind of stressing is looking at the percent of cases that are positive from the total tests that were conducted, you know, were resulted on a, on a given day. We were up in the 10%, 12% range back when things were kind of at their worst, in the middle of April, and that has gotten down to where it's in the 4% to 6% range now. We are testing more healthy people. The county is doing serology tests out at the fairgrounds to see if somebody has the antibodies. So that is not, that you, you could be actively shedding the virus at that point, but not necessarily. It could have been you had it in the past, were asymptomatic, and have already shed the virus. The PCR testing that is actually, the test that will confirm whether it's active. But I do think we're going to see, you know, we shouldn't be alarmed to see more positives being identified, because we're testing, we're testing more. That's simply the fact. Volusia County, we've actually done, if you think about it, between the nursing home and Orman and the jail, that was 30% of all the cases in Volusia County. If you, if you think about the fact that it has about a 14- to 17-day period to resolve, you know, we have a couple of hundred active cases in the county right now. You know, the 500 and some odd that are out there, the, you know, many of those, the ones that were mid-April and before, have, you know, the people have shed the virus. They are no longer infectious. So, you know, I think that it's important that we, that we continue to be diligent with following the social distancing rules, you know, doing what we can to protect the folks that are more vulnerable with underlying health conditions, or, or folks that are older. But I do think that we have, we've turned the corner, and as long as we continue to be responsible as we move forward, I, I think we're at a point where we can see the, the light at the end of the tunnel. And lastly, don't forget to fill out the census.
Yes.
Farewell. Commissioner Henry?
A quick question that maybe the city attorney can clear up for us. I got a call today regarding bingo facility that's here in my area, in my zone, and they were unclear as to what the governor's new order meant in terms of bingo halls. They said that they had got, they had got the message that although they were like for five, they were like for 400. I think their capacity and that they would be able to have 50. Does that mean that, does that mean that they are, does that mean that they will be able to open up soon, or does that mean that they will be able to open up now? Because they're, they're thinking that it was unclear in the governor's order of where bingo halls play in, in the quarters. So maybe if you explain it to me now, and then I can give you the number, and maybe you can call them as well, and explain it to them better.
Yes, I'd like to confirm. I can tell you that the governor's order, you know, doesn't address bingo halls. It refers to in-store retail sales establishments and museums and libraries, and allows occupancy up to 25% of their capacity. up to 25% of their capacity. So it is something we'll have to look into more detail to see how that might apply toward a Bingo Hall.
Yes, that was their concern. It didn't mention it, and it didn't exclude it or it didn't include. So that was their concern. So if you could get that information to me and help me get that cleared up, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, it would certainly be excluded under the previous executive order, and so the question is whether or not the most recent order would allow it, and so I'll be glad to look into that further.
Bob, if it disallowed, if it is not disallowed, do we still have the authority to disallow that?
We could be more restrict than the governor's executive order, yes.
Okay.
But my initial interpretation, you know, I don't really want to go on the record at this point until I review it all, and I may get further guidance from the governor's office as well, but I would say that it would not be an authorized business in that it's not a retail establishment, and it's not a museum or a library, and that being the case, the previous order would apply, and it would not be an essential business and therefore would be closed. But without giving a final word here on the fly, let me look into it a little further, see if I can get some direction, and I'll follow up.
And the other thing is I've got several calls regarding the water bill, and I just want to tell the staff and city manager that I really appreciate them getting this right. They are really getting this right for the people in state of the city. And I've got calls about people being happy that we are getting it right, and we're helping and giving them a little bit of relief as far as what we can give. And today, when I spoke to him about that, he instructed me that if people need it, get additional help by way of make payment arrangements and not being concerned about whether or not they would have water in state of the city or so, that all of that would be taken care of. And I'm just really, I just want to say thank you for looking out on that and making sure that the citizens are taken care of in that regard. And that's all I have for tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Reed, don't stick.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to concur with the comments that have been made by my colleagues. Certainly, we still have to be careful with this. I want to also share that I don't have exact information right now, but just to let the information be known, as you know, I had great concerns in regards to Midtown being tested, and it's my understanding that working with Advent Health and speaking with them, that we are going to have some testing in Midtown soon, and I look forward to being able to share that information with you. And lastly, I'd just like to say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, Happy Birthday to the mayor, and Happy Belated Birthday to Commissioner Traeger. That concludes my comments.
Thank you to one and all. Thank you to staff, and thank you for the well wishes on my birthday. It has been a glorious day of hibernating and working and just enjoying my children as well as my work family. And I would like to say that as it relates to the governor's recent order, I certainly appreciate his efforts and his desire to try to placate both parties. If I had my brothers, I would rather us had stayed within the guidelines that were recommended, but I certainly understood and understand and respect the decisions that he has made. And I would like for us to continue to move forward with compassion, yet with caution. I certainly do not want to see a spike, and things have not been as bad as they could have been, and a large part of that, in my opinion, is because our residents throughout the state of Florida, throughout Volusia County, have by and large responded to what we have asked of them. I would not like to send the message that we are anywhere near out of the woods. I firmly believe that we should continue to both practice and encourage a great deal of social distancing. I do believe that we should encourage people to support businesses, small businesses, especially our restaurants, by doing takeout, and I would actually, I was going to consider some things where maybe we can encourage people to partner together to support certain businesses throughout the community with a great deal of people who target one business per day or per week or something of that nature, where we just encourage people to support continuing to take out, but also doing it on a greater scale. Since we are beginning to open up, we do want those who are in business to be able to thrive and to at least be able to get through this difficult time. This whole COVID crisis is a difficult challenge, but the one thing that I will not, and I will never accept, is that we somehow have to choose our economy simply over saving lives. I think we have to certainly choose our economy, but at the same time, we have to make certain that we're doing all that we can to continue to promote safety and wellness and the protection of the most vulnerable among us. And so that is the message that I will continue to encourage, and at the same time, continue to respect the decisions that are made from the White House, Governor's House, to the county and our city. What I would like for us to do is to make certain that if we find, you know, places like, I realize people are very passionate about things like Bingo, but there are things that if an amusement park is not open, in my opinion, there's no reason for certain agencies or institutions such as the Bingo Hall to be open. We are still in a mode where I believe that we need to protect ourselves against this virus, and that is not, I think, an essential activity or an essential business at this time. So I'm on record right now as being supportive of restricting those things and being continuously considerate of what things we want to go beyond that the governor may or may not support. So if they begin to support things like Bingo Halls, I think that's something that we will want to consider to go in a different direction. Although I also want to say that I do recognize the importance of us all doing it throughout the community, throughout the county, and I will make that known to my colleague, the other mayors tomorrow, where at least I stand as it relates to those issues and items. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
No, sir. I sure don't. Just everybody be safe.
Farewell. Attorney Jagger?
Nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Nothing further. Okay. Thanks to one and all. We have no further public comment. Is that correct? Guess we don't have our normal commentary. So, okay, this adjourns and concludes this meeting. Thank you to one and all for all that you do. Let's continue to go Daytona Beach. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.